Regular meeting, so I'd like to call to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Monday, June 17th, if we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so our first order of business is...
So, for Bill, I'd like to read this proclamation from the Farmington Board of Education. Whereas the Farmington Board of Education is committed to providing an education program that will enable all students to attain high levels of achievement in preparation for productive, rewarding lives and responsible citizenship; and whereas students in the Farmington Public Schools effectively learn important academic content, demonstrate skills and achievement at high levels, and develop their individual talents and interests in an atmosphere that promotes cooperation, respect, and lifelong learning; and whereas Bill Silva has served as Farmington High School's principal from 2013 to 2019 to serve as a loyal and highly expert administrator, and has shown a tireless commitment to high-quality education in the public schools by his commitment to the students, staff, faculty, and community of Farmington; and whereas Bill Silva's collaborative approach has resulted in impressive student outcomes and a deep caring school environment, which is exemplified in his strong relationships with all constituencies, his visibility in classrooms and at school and community events, and his deep commitment to the success of every student; and whereas Bill Silva's dynamic and forward-thinking leadership, along with his collaboration with his students, faculty, and parents, helped to transform teaching, learning, and assessment at Farmington High School over the past six years; and whereas Bill Silva has led improvement efforts that have had a direct and dramatic impact on student achievement by elevating the role of students as leaders of their own learning within a strong and supportive school culture. And now, therefore, I, Christine Arnold, on behalf of the Board of Education and the Farmington community, hereby commend Dr. Bill Silva for his excellent work on behalf of our community. I hereby thank Bill for his selfless dedication and commitment to quality education for the children of Farmington dated the 17th day of June at Farmington, Connecticut. Bill, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication.
Can you come up for us? Thank you.
So I want to meet this Bill Silva guy. He sounds pretty special.
I'm just taking this from you, because we also have to read. Right. It's going to be a night of reading for you. Yes.
Do you want to do that first? Do you want me to say something first?
I'll let you collect your thoughts. This one will be shorter.
Okay, so this one was provided to us by Mike D'Amico from the state of Connecticut. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Dr. William Bill Silva in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to Farmington High School as principal. The students, faculty, and staff at FHS are the beneficiaries of your dynamic collaborative and forward-thinking approach to educational leadership. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success, given the 17th day of June at the state capital, Hartford, Connecticut, and signed by the Speaker of the House and Secretary of State.
Very nice. Thank you.
Again, Bill, I can't thank you enough for your service to this community, the impact you've had on the students. I was telling Ellen when I came in, the memory that stands out to me is just a few days ago when we were walking behind you at graduation, and the students just cheering you, the parents cheering you, high fives all around. It kind of just sums up, you know, your career here and how everyone feels about you, and we're so grateful.
Thank you. It's a little overwhelming over the past, you know, few weeks in particular as different groups have kind of come together to bid me farewell, so to speak, and, you know, I don't really like the limelight, and I have always said that the good work that I've done is really the good work that we've all done together, in terms of the collaboration that goes on here at Farmington High School and certainly in the Farmington Public Schools. I do want to thank the Board for giving me this opportunity. Six years ago, when I interviewed a final in a series of about, seems like six interviews, the final interview to make sure I was the right guy. You know, I left that meeting after my appointment just, you know, almost ecstatic, and I remember calling some folks sitting in my car outside the town hall, calling people, and anything I could have imagined, this opportunity has really been that and so much more. I mean, I knew at the time this would be an incredible opportunity for me personally and professionally. I knew it would be, you know, kind of the pinnacle of my career, that the way I would finish my career as an educator would be as principal at Farmington High School, but I could not have imagined just the wonderful people that I had a chance to work with, the wonderful staff and faculty here at Farmington High School, my fellow administrators, certainly all the administrators in the district, incredibly supportive Board, you know, Kathy and Kim and all the folks at the town hall who've just, you know, helped make my work as rich and as rewarding and as positive as it's been. So, and certainly, I can't forget the students. They really are the ones that kind of touch me the most, and Christine said, after graduation, which was incredibly wonderful, I did have a little sense of melancholy that evening and the next day, just realizing that would be my last opportunity to be that connected and that close to a group of graduates, and I will really sorely miss that. But it's been a wonderful ride. I think I'm leaving the school a little bit better than where, the way I found it, not that it was bad, but I think I've moved things along. I'm also incredibly confident and positive about who and/or the team that I'm turning the school over to, and I just anticipate great things ahead. So, I want to thank the Board. I want to thank Kathy and Kim and my colleagues and everyone for this great opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll open it up. Anybody else? Want to say anything? Guys good? Good. Thank you. Ellen, we'll turn it over to you. Kurt, you want to come up?
I want to be able to see you. So, about 13 years ago, I became a parent up here at the high school, and the summer was ending, and I was getting some counsel from our former superintendent, Bob Villanova. We'll just say I was dealing with a little circumstance. And, you know, Bob was always wonderful to me back then. So, we're getting ready to get back into school, and I'll never forget it. Bob looked at me and he said, "Do you know Kurt Pandecio?" And I said, "Nope. I have no idea. I have never heard of him." And Bob looked at me and he said, "Well, that's a good thing." But of course, I did get to know you, Kurt, and very quickly got to know you as someone I could turn to for advice, perspective, as a parent, and as I took a seat on the Board. As an administrator, I got to know you as a champion for our students, their voice, their talents, their well-being. You recognize students as valuable contributors. You get to know and understand them, and our faculty, and actually, our entire community. And in what I feel is probably one of your toughest roles as a disciplinarian, you do so with such kindness and compassion. I also know you as a person of immense discipline and endurance, both in your 25-year career in Farmington and as an avid distance runner. Farmington High School is a better place today. We have benefited from your leadership, your visions, your follow-through, and we have been extremely fortunate to have you as a role model to so many for so long. You leave Farmington High School, but our school and our community are a better place. And so, I need to go against Bob Villanova and say that knowing you has been a good thing, Kurt. So, now I have the honor of reading your proclamation on behalf of the Board of Education. Mr. Kurt Pandecio, whereas the Farmington Board of Education is committed to providing an educational program that will enable all students to attain high levels of achievement in preparation for productive, rewarding lives and responsible citizenship; and whereas students in the Farmington Public Schools effectively learn important academic content, demonstrate skills and achievement at high levels, and develop their individual talents and interests in an atmosphere that promotes cooperation, respect, and lifelong learning; and whereas Kurt Pandecio has served as Farmington High School Assistant Principal from 1994 to 2019 as a dedicated and highly skilled administrator, and has shown a tireless commitment to high-quality education in the public schools by his commitment to the students, staff, faculty, and community of Farmington; and whereas Kurt Pandecio has been instrumental in the development of visionary programming practices and professional learning opportunities for faculty and staff. His innovative and collaborative approach supported improvement efforts that have led to state, national, and international acclaim for FHS. And whereas Kurt Pandecio elevated the student voice through student-led instructional rounds, student surveys, and student-initiated projects and clubs at Farmington High School. And as a result, Farmington students have presented at international conferences on the power of student voice and leadership. And whereas Kurt Pandecio is a strategic and gifted instructional leader, he has embraced innovation in the areas of instruction, programming, and operations through teacher teaming, rigorous AP offerings, and strong resource management as examples of his varied contributions to the Farmington Public Schools. And whereas Kurt Pandecio has supervised several different departments in his time as Assistant Principal at Farmington High School, he has been a strong supporter of the fine and applied arts and has contributed to a future-oriented vision of learning environments in our schools by maintaining a safe, secure, and welcoming school for all high school students. And now, therefore, I, Ellen Sayuda, on behalf of the Farmington Board of Education and the Farmington community, hereby commend Mr. Kurt Pandecio for his excellent work on behalf of our community, and I hereby thank Kurt for his selfless dedication and commitment to quality education for the children of Farmington, dated the 17th day of June 2019, Farmington, Connecticut. One more. Mr. D'Amico didn't make it here. So Kurt, this is a citation from the General Assembly, introduced by Representative Mike D'Amico, Representative Tammy Exum, Senator Derek Slapp, and Senator Gennaro Bizarro. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to Mr. Kurt Pandecio in recognition of your 25 years of dedicated service to Farmington High School as Assistant Principal. The students, faculty, and staff of FHS are the beneficiaries of your innovative, strategic, and visionary approach to educational leadership. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success, given the 17th day of June 2019 at the state capital, Hartford, Connecticut, signed by Martin Looney, our Speaker, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of State.
Well, thank you all for those kind words. You know, 25 years is a long time, and I've been fortunate to spend the past 25 years in a district that values and supports education. And I think that's made all the difference here. You know, I would say to all of you on the Board, to Kathy, to Kathy's predecessors, Bob Villanova and the late Bill Strike, you know, thank you. It's, you know, thank you for all the opportunities that I've had to, you know, to work and to grow alongside so many talented and passionate educators. I'm proud to have been a part of the Farmington Public Schools, and, you know, I think almost anybody who's worked here can say that, and I think that says an awful lot for all of you and for the community. You know, I'm proud of what our students have accomplished. I'm proud of the excellent reputation that the schools and the district have. I'm proud of all the work that we've done together. And really, I think that, in fact, is what I'm most proud of. It's how we've done this work. We have done it together. Relationships really do matter. That's, I think, what has sustained me for 25 years here, the way that students interact with each other and with their teachers, the way, you know, how careful and considerate and supportive they are of each other, the sort of relationships, you know, the kind of partnership that building administrators have with their faculties and with their staffs and with the community. It seems to be that, you know, the way we do business here, we inspire each other, we nurture each other, we celebrate each other. Those are the things that make Farmington such a special place. And, you know, I'll always be grateful for all of the people who have supported me over these past 25 years, some really wonderful people, and I'll take that with me, along with all of the friendships that I've made. So, really, for one last time, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you. So, we're going to take a short recess.
I just wanted to say, you know, to have Phil and Kurt leave in the same year, a superintendent is a little overwhelming, but I also think that it was the right thing. They are an exceptional team, and they are both very humble and have strong connections with every constituency. So, although it's very difficult for us to say goodbye, there's something about the two of you leaving together that's very special. And, you know, Bill, you know, came to Farmington six years ago and brought this just set of beliefs, and one of them being very connected to our belief of relationships matter, and he has modeled that from the very first day, very first interview. And we have just been so fortunate to have you leading our high school over the past six years. He's been transformational in his leadership, and I have so enjoyed, as you said, watching Bill, whether it's he's interacting with students, or parents, or community members, or teachers. There's just a joy in everything that he does, and he just finds such joy in those interactions. And when I think, you know, of Kurt, he basically inducted almost every administrator here in Farmington, and he's been our historian. He has been someone who's been the keeper of, you know, the beliefs that we so, you know, hold closely to our hearts. He's been the keeper of that. And he's, when I came to Farmington, he was someone who I was able to really learn so much about Farmington from him. He is another person who has deep connections with teachers, students, community members, parents. What he said about how we do the work is absolutely on point. We do this as a team. We collaborate with one another. We see each other as equals in this work, and I just, I thank both of these incredible educators, incredible leaders, for being a part of Farmington's history and contributing to who we are, and your legacy will live on for many, many years to come. They will, I know Kurt knows, we speak about Bill Strike. We speak about Bob Villanova, Eileen Howley, all of those who have come before us, and we will speak about these two gentlemen in years to come. What would Kurt do? What would Bill do? And so, it's just been, you know, a pleasure to work with these two individuals, and I thank them on behalf of the entire school district.
Excellent. Okay, so now we will take a recess. Item number six, consideration of the superintendent's report. Item A, engaged learning update.
So, this is our last one for the year, and we have information about our biliteracy certificates. Thirty-four students from the class of 2019 received biliteracy certificates, and that was something I think Kim had presented a while back, and so that's some of the results of that work. West Woods had visited a farm as part of their science unit, really thinking, learning about how farming methods can impact the environment and the food choices they make. East Farms had a little free library donated, and many of you remember Beth Brandt, a former teacher, and she donated this free library for East Farms. And bilingual buddies at West District, that includes students from our high school, another excellent example of leadership at the high school, of students coming down to the elementary and mentoring our elementary students. So, those are the updates.
Item 6B, professional appointments, retirements, and resignations.
So, there are two resignations here. We, as I said at the last meeting, we've had a very busy hiring season.
Oh, great. Item seven, budget impact, budget update. So, before we give this over to you, Vince, I also wanted to recognize that this will be Vince's last meeting with us, and wish you all the best. We have a little gift for you here that I'm not going to get up and give to you at this moment, but we really appreciate everything you've done for the Board and all your work.
Thank you, Christine. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Now tell us some good news.
Yeah, I think I'll be delivering my last budget impact and budget update. I'll be delivering a message, I think I've been, similar one that I've been delivering all year. The same trends, I saw the same trends in May, you know, that I'll talk to a little bit further in the agenda when we look at the financials. With pressure in the special education lines, especially in evaluations and consultations, it's something that I did talk with Dr. Singer about. Again, we did see a little bit more pressure, which is somewhat unusual, but we had a lot of kids move into Farmington during the school year this year. And with that comes always an opportunity. There could be a child who needs special education services or nursing services, too, and we did experience some of that in May as well. So, that actually increased, had more pressure on our tuition line and on our special education in-town transportation line. So, but it's really the same areas that we've been experiencing all year that are keeping going here, right to the end. All the grant revenues that Beth Haber carefully monitors, some every month, have come in, and as expected, to the Board. There was a slight improvement in the May self-insurance situation, but I still wouldn't say there's any change to the trend because it's going to be more than one month of slight improvement to improve what's been not a good trend with the self-insurance fund this year. And my last comment about in this area is simply the capital projects remain the focus of Tim Harris and Matt Ross's work, my work, Beth Haber's work. There are just many projects, significant capital projects, small school building projects that are being, we're already jumped into, or we're gearing up to in the next few days. So, that is certainly a lot of work and a lot of hard work that folks are doing in that area that's going on.
Any questions for Vince? Good. Thank you, Vince. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjust our agenda just slightly. I would like to move item nine to the new item eight. So, if I can have a motion to move the Business Administrators Report to item eight on our agenda.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Very good. So, Vince, you're on again.
Okay, so we're looking at the May 2019 financial statement that was prepared by myself and Beth Haber and with the Board. I won't restate those things. I'm just going to say same trends, but I'm happy to, if anybody has a question about one specific thing. This is May. It's not the final, you know, June is quote-unquote "year end," and a lot of activities happen in the month of June as things are getting closed out. I, myself, feel seeing this now for a number of years, I think we're quote-unquote "landing," that was Mike Ryan term from years ago, landing the budget the way it was expected. I don't, I, myself, don't see any unexpected things that I'm looking at on a day-to-day basis. And Beth, do you concur with that? So, as we spend every day right now thinking about the, you know, we've settled May, and we're thinking about how the year's coming to a close, you know, it's coming to a close in a reasonable manner, as we're expecting. I want to point out something that I think's important. All the funds, so like the Farmington Valley Transition Academy, the Excel Fund, the Continuing Ed Fund, Student Activities, of course, all the funds are in good positions, and I'm very proud to say that the Cafeteria Fund is in a very good position. I can't take too much credit for that. Jose, as Cafeteria Committee members of the Board know that. Beth and I did Jose's closeout the month of May. It was a, I mean, it was just the highest participation he's ever experienced, I think we've ever experienced. It was just a terrific month. And that's going to turn out to be a good thing, because remember Chartwell's is on a fixed contract, and if Chartwell's does a good thing for the fund, it goes to the fund. It's not, Chartwell's isn't making any extra funding off this. They have a contract. So, they have worked as a good partner, and the fund is in the first real time in a good position. And I say that particularly, I've mentioned this to Beth earlier today, I was going to bring it up, just because in the next coming school year, it's in a position in which if there were small equipment things or something like that, the fund would be able to, with the committee's thing, you know, so, and that's such a good thing. Hopefully, that continues here in Farmington. So, but those are the things I wanted to point out, and but I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions for Vince?
I just want to say real quick, Vince, it's been a pleasure working with you. You came in, you were kind of thrown into the fire when you took over. You had a really difficult job with, kind of, you know, flying without a net a little bit, and you kept it together, and, you know, one of the most unsung jobs in the district. You did, you did it with, you know, extraordinary professionalism and competence. You know, our numbers are always good. You always gave us the information we needed to make good decisions. I think you worked really well with Kathy. You've done a phenomenal job for the district. We're sorry to see you go, but I'm very happy, very happy for you and what's going to happen in the future. And I've known you since you were in Excel, and you've always done a great job for our district. You always did a great job for our district and for our kids. So, thank you very much, and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, thank you. It's been a pleasure, you know? And as Bill and Kurt said earlier, it's like you do come to Farmington, and when you do leave, whether retire or take a position like I'm doing, you really feel good, because it's, this is a good school system. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No, go ahead.
I don't know how much time you spend with others in their committee meetings at all, but I know, in our negotiations room, it's, we've spent a lot of time together over the last few years, and I will miss you a lot. It's been really great getting to know you and spending time together. You're great to work with, just a great person overall, good person. So, we're very sad to see you go. good, good person, so we're very sad to see you go.
I appreciate that, Mark, and I know the commitment that board members make in this district. All the years that I've come to these board meetings, I've always admired the volunteers in this town.
Great. All right, so if I can have a motion to approve the financial report dated May 2019?
Motion, second.
Do a unanimous second for Vince.
Let's do a unanimous second.
Last time.
So, the motion from Bill, second?
Unanimous second.
Unanimous second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Very good. Vince, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now I need a motion to exit to executive session, please.
Do we want to, we kicked it to the end of the meeting?
Um, I'm fine. Okay, so I need a motion to move item now nine to item 13.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. Report of Board Chair, please. That's me. It has been a fantastic week. Promotions and graduations were successful, and this school year is coming to a close. So, consideration of committee reports.
I just want to say what a great job Christine did at graduation.
Yes, Christine.
And your speech, it's something that I continue to hear people talk about, so just fabulous job, and thank you so much for stepping up.
Always.
And then Bill, for stepping up for our IAR promotion.
Thank you so much for that.
Did a great job, so thank you both.
Christine's speech made headlines, right? Did you, the current?
Yes.
Yep, in case anyone wants to go check it out. All right, so consideration of committee reports. Mark, on personnel negotiations.
We did meet today, so we've set dates for August. I don't know if I can announce them yet, if it's, I think you agreed on them, so I think August 15th we're meeting, and we have a series of dates after that as well to, you know, get things going and hopefully be done by the end of September. We're actually meeting again on Wed, Thursday with the town to discuss preliminary discussions on going into negotiations, so busy week, lots of dates to come, but not till August.
Policy, we have nothing scheduled at this time. Curriculum?
Uh, nothing scheduled till after the summer.
And communications?
Still waiting to see a draft of the summer newsletter.
Great. Okay, we'll move on to report of committee liaisons. Chris is not here for Cruck. Focus, Bill?
Yeah, we met last month, I think on May 17th is the day we met. It was a pretty well-attended meeting. Recap the year, focus what they did. It was a pretty eventful year, they had a pretty successful discussion on vaping. What's clearly happening with Focus now is it's become much more of a quasi-entity with the town, and I think we're getting more funding from, you know, working with the town side of things, with youth services for a couple of different, I can get the specifics offline if there's any kind of questions. Their biggest challenge is the lack of volunteers. They just don't have enough volunteers. They're going to go probably to four meetings a year. Their goal is to try to incorporate more involvement of certain administrators, particularly in the healthcare side of things. Admin Free's still doing a great job leading it, and will continue to be involved. Director of Youth Services, I forgot the guy's name, was there, and, you know, that was, there's really good collaboration there. They need about $15,000 to $20,000 a year to keep going. They're confident they're, they're good next year, but down the road, they're not sure. They're looking for fundraising opportunities for community partners. And then one of the last things we talked about was involving, involving in that effort, you know, trying to get some, some sort of a consensus around the development of the teen center. There is a teen center in our town. It's only open, it's very, very limited hours, Mondays, six to nine generally in the summertime. They're open Fridays, I think, from six to eight for, you know, during the school year. But it's really oriented around kids that don't have any other opportunities to do anything, and that's the challenge. Focus would like to see that programming develop and expand and enhance, but, you know, there's really good people working. Nancy Parent does, you know, the work of the saint in terms of keeping that process, that program going. So it was a good year. They're doing good work.
Okay. Farmington Public School Foundation, so they wrapped up the year awarding several, several grants to some of the people who had submitted applications, so I expect to see them probably at our first meeting or second meeting going into the next school year. Interscholastic Athletics Advisory? Nothing, nothing to report there. Chamber of Commerce?
Yeah, we awarded our, our scholarship recipient was Larissa Barrett this year. The Farmington Chamber was happy to honor her with an award, and the Chamber is looking forward at working with JA because we have a challenge in our town where we don't have a lot of corporate offices that are close to one another and providing some transportation so that the students can have a full career day. And a lot of towns do it where they have walking access to local businesses, but we don't really have a good plan like that, so we're really hoping for the Career Department to do that. I think it'll be a really great day.
Good. Green Efforts, Andrea?
Our last meeting, June 4th, was canceled, and we don't have another meeting on the calendar yet.
Cafeteria, Liz?
Uh, nothing since the last report.
Health and Wellness, Ellen?
No report.
And Building, Ellen?
Oh, sure. We're going to be meeting Wednesday. We're going to be interviewing, re-interviewing two more owners, representatives. We went through six hours of interviews at our last meeting, interviewing four, four companies. So it's a very thoughtful group, and we really had a lot of discussion and came out of the interviews. We're going to be pulling two back in for a deeper dive on Wednesday, so we're very hopeful, hopeful that we can make that announcement soon.
Great. Okay, so now I will ask for a motion to exit to executive session.
Motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
We are in executive session.
Okay, so we're back on the record. Alicia, can I ask you to come sit up here for us and join us?
Yeah. It's nice to see you.
You as well. So our last motion of the evening, if I can have a motion to appoint Alicia Bowman to the position of Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, replacing the position of Business Administrator effective July 1st, 2019.
Motion.
And a unanimous second?
unanimous second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I would say welcome, but you're here. Congratulations, Alicia.
Thanks. Wow, this is such a nice surprise. I can tell you all of the thinking and reflecting and, I took out my philosophy of education from when I was in college, making sure it was still on point, and, but it was a good reflective exercise, really, honestly, and thank you so much. Thank you for believing in me and trusting in me and, you know, bringing another seat to the table. I'm really excited to support Kathy and learn with her and from her and Kim, although I work very closely with them in many, many different ways. I do know that when you shift into new roles, that the transition is really important, and I can assure you that I will take that very seriously. It's something that I'm going to invest time in, I always have. I've had to navigate some transitions throughout the years, many, I was counting. I've had six different kind of roles through the years, and I think you only get one shot at that, and so that's really going to be my work, and I've already been thinking about the many people that I can connect with, and I'm excited about it. And I will use that kind of data gathering experience to think about what some of my first steps will be in this role, and I'll be very transparent about it. This is what I'm doing, and this is why, this is what I heard, and I'm really excited. So thank you so much.
As you can see, we all feel about you.
Thank you. Thank you. Really, it means a lot.
Well, no, like unprecedented in my 10 years of doing.
Thank you. Thanks.
Congratulations.
You threw me off, I saw Kara here, I'm like, what is she doing? I thought maybe she, maybe she missed our admin meeting this morning, so she wanted to check in because we're so faithful, but, but thank you all so much, really, it means so much. It does.
Awesome. With that, motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
Something before we go to break for the summer that I wanted to kind of bring up is, since we're in the new business section, is to consider over the summer, I've heard a lot of discussion about midterms and finals from a lot of parents, a lot of different people about, you know, how we've moved into a mastery-based environment, the usefulness of finals, how a lot of parents and kids feel about finals, and maybe there's, comes a point where we may have to have that discussion about whether we continue to offer midterms and finals, or if there's another way with the new mastery-based system that we're in that we want to consider for the fall.
Absolutely.
I don't know if that's going to be a policy team, actually, curriculum team, or just a straight-up vote.
Or maybe all of the above.
It could be all of the above. We'll, we'll look into it because there may be parts of policies that mention that, so we can definitely look at. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?